He's spent nine years at this school, South Central. Which, in South Central terms, is a lifetime. And you all know it. Okay? When I was in school, we had...I was reading an article a while back and said, "In seven years, we had four principals." Yeah, it's a revolving door, okay? And you know as well as I do that the kids like this man, your parents like this man, your staff likes this man, and I believe the administration likes this man, okay? I don't think there's a doubt, there's no doubt in my mind that people like this man, okay? You know as well as I do that there have been people in the past that when they say "we're leaving," we would take up a bus ticket, we would take up a pledge and take them out of the bus ticket, you understand? And I want to tell about the dedication he's had to these people down here, okay? He's probably passed up opportunities to go to bigger and better schools. I'm not going to say better, I'm South Central striving true, okay? Or bigger schools, maybe more lucrative schools, closer to his house, and we don't know where he lives compared to where he works at thirty minutes away. He's passed them up and he's stayed with us, okay?
When it comes to number one, he is remarkable. It really saddens me that our community is going to lose him. For number two, if we have to lose number one, then number two should be put in the position to keep the stability for our school and for our children.
And I implore with y'all to make the vice principal principal. These kids have done went through too much. First day of school, they're all excited. Next thing they know, the principal's leaving. Next thing they know, the Spanish teacher's leaving. Everybody's leaving, everybody's crying, everybody's upset. My kid don't need to go through that. No kid need, don't need to. No parent should have to go through that. We should know that our teachers, our principal, our vice principal is going to be able to be there and stay. This one-year contract, bull. It's bull. Y'all want a one-year contract? How long do y'all sit up here? Four years? Is that fair for a principal to only get one year? Or anybody? I mean, if y'all want to change the rules up, let's vote y'all in every year. Give them the same right that y'all get. Is that too much to ask?
South Central High School, South Central Junior/Senior High School, received a request for, from a gentleman regarding the creation of a middle school softball program. And this one's really your call. As, they're talking about a creation of a program, volunteer coaching positions which require two coaches, or paid positions if the boards wish, for grade six, seventh, and eighth grade girls to make up the team. Practices would be six to eight after-school practices, six to eight after-school practices, and would not interfere with the high school equipment needed, or the fields at the schools, bats, balls, helmets. They feel they can get a lot of that, donate uniforms, could donate to the school colors, say Lady Rebels on them. Schedule through the athletic department would take place, home games played on the high school field, transportation to and from games could be the responsibility of parents, so there would be no costs or burden to the school corporation transportation. As you know, it's like anything else, we had, and if you're a soccer player, please don't, don't throw stones at me, but when we entertained soccer, we were told that it wouldn't cost the district anything. When we turned it around, it cost the district quite a bit of money. If you were a swimmer, we started the swimming program. It was supposed to be free, it wouldn't run a cost the district anything. I think we pay $6,000 a year for a plane rental at Wyndham for the swim program. All those programs are very, very good. It just, it's really the pleasure of working with them.
Well, I feel this way. South Central don't have football, they don't have soccer, they don't have a lot of things offered up here, and I think this is a good thing. Matter of fact, I had said something to Keith Marshall some time ago about getting the junior high football program started down there. Well, the school's not big, but we don't have enough kids. Well, we got enough kids to handle the softball thing, and I'm going to make a motion out of fact that we approve it.
You know, it's a very good base thought. I would like to make a comment first before we do this. My second year of teaching, I thought this would be really cool to have a baseball team at Corden, so I volunteered and we had a baseball team. And then I realized all of the issues that I got into. There was nobody else had a sixth grade baseball team. Now, I'm sure that this has been researched a little bit in depth, a lot more than what I did. And so I'm sure there's someplace where they have this softball team, that I would like to see us, before we make a motion to do that, I'd like to see us think about that a little bit. And then I also, I'm a hundred percent for this, but I want to think about it a little bit before we just jump in, because it also said it'd be transported by parents. Boy, we're in a big time issue right there. So, that, I don't think we can do legally, transported by parents, without some kind of a major problem, so we're going to have to let our athletic directors look into that. Again, I have no problem with that whatsoever, I think it's a fantastic idea, but I think we better get our bases down just a little bit first before we make a motion to do that. That's just, that's the way I think.
Well, there's no reason to order a lawyer, they can't drive these little white buses, you don't have to have CDLs and stuff like that, so that eliminates that, that driver danger problem.
But how many schools do we participate against?
I don't know.
Has junior high programs?
Yeah, there was nobody to compete against.
See, there's nobody to compete against.
Yeah, well, like I said, I'm sure they looked into some of this, or they wouldn't have had to, you know, want us to approve it or this or that.
Well, I'm not glad, I think we need to do a little more research before we approve.
That's everybody's opinion.
Well, I don't think, I don't think they're going to be playing softball this, next month, so I think we got a month to look into this table till next month, and then you meet with the A.D. and the individual that's sparing this up.
Yeah, that's the thing that was bothering me, was the transportation.
Yeah, I withdraw my motion then.
Okay.
And we're going to bring you back with information after next, next month.
The next item is, I think Ms. Simpson, is Leslie still here? Is it equation? Hi there. This is the request that Ms. Simpson had regarding St. Joe, her daughter Suzanne, fifth grade student at St. Joe, wishing to play on the South Central Elementary basketball team. And in all defense, we've had a couple conversations on the phone, I've talked to her mother-in-law, who, and, hi there. And apparently, we've done it all in different kind of ways. There've been cases where we've required the two classes to attend during the day. There's been kids like her other daughter, perhaps, that played, that didn't do that, or you didn't do that at the time you played. The question becomes, do you want to allow students from other schools, or even possibly homeschool students, who don't go to other schools, to come in and play on the team, the school team? And that's really a pleasure of the board. I do think we need to be very consistent in how we do it. That's all the thing I ask.
Let me throw something, I have a question.
Well, I just, I would like to make a point, my daughter is also on that team, and that scene, these children, they've gone through the D.V.A.L. program through South Central, and the volleyball, and clinics of all sorts for the trainway team to benefit South Central, and eventually, they will benefit because they will go to South Central, too, eventually. But right now, they're learning the fundamentals, and I feel like these children, cardiovascular exercise, social acceptance, and getting involved early is very important at this age, fifth grade. And I, I'm hurt, I mean, how many parents in the past have been willing to say, "I'll take my child to in front of the school," because they support that religious education, I admire that. And then to face that now they're not going to be accepted because they're not choosing their kids, it's not an option, they don't have an option for that type of physical education, the basketball, and certain things at their school.
And your point's very well taken. And again, part of this issue of inconsistency is, at one time, St. Joe did not have a team, and then they created a team. They had the enrollment to have a team, and then enrollment's dropped, or whatever's happened, and now they do not have a team. I guess my only concern for the board is, what do you say to the parent who has a child that attends South Central Elementary School, who's going to sit the bench, and sit the bench and not have an opportunity to play while a student from another school comes in and plays in front of them? Because we'll get those calls, I will get a call that says, "My child's not getting to play, but you're letting this kid from some other school play in their place."
They've done that for years down there, too, and I guarantee you, I was one of the parents that didn't like it, but you know, that's just the way it is.
But that's really the call of the board. I just think we should be very consistent, and I agree, you know? One of the things that we probably don't do well in our community is have recreational leagues for kids to play outside the school league type of thing, where if kids get cut, they have an opportunity to play in another venue type of thing. Some other sports can use that a little bit better than we do. Pleasure of the board.
We went through this, we went through this about ten years ago, down south with this issue. And if they, if they had that sport at that school, we required them to take two classes. But if they don't have the sport, we let them come and play. And that's been what we've done, so we need to check our policy and make sure we've got a policy on that. But I make a motion to let her play.
Me too.
Let me talk first, let me, and I agree with...
You're awful talking to him tonight.
I don't know what I'm doing. I want to explain my, I want to explain my part here. In my years of teaching, we allowed this to happen. And I had, you know, people from St. Joe on my ball team. I had no problem, I mean, I'm not saying they weren't great, or whatever, but I had people from St. Joe on my ball team. It was an accepted policy. I go back to the point where they did have a team, that might have been in the early 2000s, or somewhere in that area, they actually had a team. And at that time, they played at St. Joe. Let's go look at it this way. I feel that if this young lady is going to an accredited school, there's a difference between St. Joe and homeschooling, in that I feel like, at St. Joe, you're more in an accredited school situation. They are getting that hours of instruction. If we're talking about someone that's homeschooling, and I have no problem with students that are homeschooling, some of them are a fantastic job, but they're still not in that structured school setting, then I think the two hours of class should apply. But if they're already in the St. Joe school system, where they're getting that structure, then I personally think that young lady or young gentleman should be allowed to play in this situation. Now, maybe that clarified our thoughts a little bit, so in my motion, or in my reference, I would try to make some kind of a policy that identifies between an accredited situation and a basic homeschool situation, which does not have that structure of a classroom setting.
We shouldn't.
Excuse me, Ray, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm tired of it. I'm like, you ain't running for office, are you?
We went through that ten years ago, and wasn't a homeschooler.
You ain't running for office, are you?
No, no, it shouldn't be. But that was, that's my thought on it.
Well, and we're still, I assume, on the elementary, when I coached, grades were important.
Yeah.
You had to be passing. There, they're going to be more accountable for their grades than homeschooling.
Yeah.
Because I'm going to give my kid an A if I'm homeschooling him, and so I don't want to play ball.
But the grades, the grades of the conduct still applies to making that team, so that's my perspective on that.
Ray made the motion, I second it.
I'll let you make the motion.
Opposed? Sustained? Did you vote there?
Yeah.
Okay. Six, zero, or six, one, zero.
Finally, we have donations to South Central Junior/Senior High School from the plumbers of light fitters, local 502 for $105, and top of medical, top of medical services, the $500 to junior high for the basketball program. We want to acknowledge those donations, the board to accept them, and express our appreciation for those donations.
Anybody got any questions for Dr. Clark? Board Communications, we'll start with Joyce.
Um, not only, I don't think that we have any control over people who make the decision to change positions. You know, they could do whatever they want, and it's like in any profession, if you decide you don't want to do something after you've done it so many years, why? You have the option to do otherwise, so I don't feel like that anybody on the board caused the situation at South Central.
Somebody's got to ready to speak.
I mean, you can't stop somebody if they want to quit their job, if it's a good person in a good position, and one of theirs is in, and you feel that they're doing a good job, you could go to them and negotiate something else. Even to my view, except the fact that he wants to resign from his position. If you guys go back and talk about it, you could go and try and negotiate a different contract, and say, "Hey, we give you a three-year contract, are you willing to stay?" And see what happens.
I think he's been off to it. I think he's been off to it.
I mean, then after this, you don't have to stop it, I mean, you can try and do what you want to do. That's all we're asking.
Anything else, Joyce?
That's all.
Karen?
I want to thank the student council reps, always enjoy hearing everything that's going on, I really appreciate them. And one thing I've been getting several calls on, a lot of people are just kind of concerned that, like at the high school at Corden, that they're not, they don't do the fun things, a lot of the fun things they just do. Like now, they only do one home thing. They alternate, you know, just doing like football, and it alternates. They don't do, they always get it mixed up, Panther puff, powder puff, football, whatever. You know, they just want to do a lot of more fun things to kind of build school spirit, so.
I have a conversation with student body representatives, and they were pretty good this time, so we'll talk a little bit about what kind of fun things they could be doing. But I tell you what, they got a lot of spirit that's going on with those kids, as they do in most schools, but...
I'm sorry, but how I look at it, y'all favor Corden, and y'all put South Central ahead. I mean, y'all want to get in the baseball thing. I mean, y'all, y'all sitting there debating on the softball team, but y'all want the powder puff, let's have fun at Corden, and y'all leaving, I'm sorry, what is going on here?
And you're an outsider?
I'm an outsider looking in. I mean, this is horrible.
And I'm in 41 was just not open on, why wasn't it put in front of us?
Why are we not putting our question tonight? Why is she not principal tonight? It's on the agenda. Why is the back door going on back here?
Okay, Karen?
I'm sorry, being rude.
Mary?
Um, I usually don't have a lot of comments, but I've got quite a few tonight. I had a principal one time that had a poster on his wall that said, "What is right is not always popular, and what is popular is not always right." And I'm going to talk about some unpopular topics tonight. Number one is principal contracts. I was a contracted teacher for this corporation for 38 years, and unless I screwed up royally, I had tenure, and I had the security of knowing I would be employed next year. We don't do that for our principals. We used to give two-year contracts until about two years ago, and now it's this, piecemeal, give them a year, give them a year. Number one, as a former teacher, I look at that as dangling the carrot. You do what I want. If we have principals that need help in areas, we give it to teachers. If you've got a concern, fellow board members, not giving somebody a two-year contract, I would love to know why. Not personal, professional. And that's a very unpopular stance, I'm sorry, for me to take. Number two, I come from a political family. I was a very, very shy kid, and I didn't learn to speak my mind until I worked with the teachers' union. Because if you don't speak up, you're going to get walked all over. We have elections coming up. I will neither vote or campaign for or against anybody who would future sit on this board. All I can say is know your candidates well, before you make your decisions. And I will put campaign signs for school board in my yard, other words, I will go. There was something else, but I forgot. See, if you don't use sticky notes, you forget it. Oh, when I decided to run for school board two years ago, I had no agendas, I had nobody to hire, I had nobody to fire. I wanted to try to continue, because I think in 38 years as a classroom teacher, I changed some lives. I would like to think that I am helping provide the most qualified people in the classroom and the schools to get the kids through all parts of the day, and the safest schools. Other than that, I don't care who has 15 minutes long of recess, or who's not wearing purple shoes today. I want to look at the big picture and know that every kid, including the South Central guys and girls, is getting the best for our money's worth that we can afford to do. And I'm not running for reelection right now, but I just, I get fed up once in a while, and I just have to spout. My kids used to tell me in class, "I'd make a better preacher that I would have taught." But, other than personnel issues and flip-flops of teachers and stuff, I think we've had a good start to school this year. I hope it only gets better, whatever's there. I'm done.
Larry?
I don't have any better than that. Mary pretty well took care of most of my thoughts.
Mary took care of my thoughts, too.
She can take care of mine, but I don't have the...
Going back to the principal issue, I've talked to Dr. Clark a long time about trying to get him to stay, and Dr. Clark worked real hard with that, but his family come first. And he said he wanted to be with his kids when they was playing sports. So, you can believe that or not, same way with the Spanish teacher, supposedly the board run her off, but I don't think the board run her off. If they did, I'm here, that's what everybody's saying, the board run her off, but when I talked to Dr. Clark, I get a different story. So, you know, I don't know.
First of all, I want you to know that as a superintendent, I have been very, very supportive of Mr. Marshall and Ms. Fleck, and the work at South Central. I guess I'm a little disappointed in the fact that there's an attitude that we shortchanged South Central, because under my administration, I don't feel that way. We put $17 million in that facility, and hired really good people to go down there and do the job. And I'm just as proud of the faculty and staff at South Central as I am at Corden. One of my legacies, and maybe I've been here too long, but one of the things that I faced when I got here was, it was them versus us. Our school district is South Harrison. It constitutes all our schools, all eight campuses. We don't pick sides, and when I entertain the audience of the student body representatives that come and talk to me, I get as much joy out of the two that come from South Central as the two that come from Corden. Yeah, it's a different campus, because they're different sizes, there is different challenges to those campuses. You've got to understand that of the 3,107 kids that we have in this school system, 66% of the student body sits on the Corden campus, about 24% sit on the South campus. But that doesn't matter if you're a kid. What it matters is they have a good, warm, conducive experience to learn. I hate it. I hate it to lose a good principal to the classroom. But you know what? The classroom is where it happens in this business. You know, Mr. Marshall wants to go back in a different way, in a different time, and touch kids as a teacher. We're all teachers in this business. Do we lose something in the loss of Mr. Marshall from the principalship to the classroom? Absolutely, I'll be the first one to tell you that. I have a lot of confidence in Ms. Fleck, I have a lot of confidence in her. I've expressed that to the board. The board has given me a direction to go, I'm following the direction of this board because I'm supposed to do what I'm told to do. The way I look at it, it's flexible, just like the board said, you know? Mr. Whipple said, "Come back and look at it again, we have some options now." But at the same time, I think we need to be fair to our assistant principal. And she knows that I have her back, I work with her. We'll try to do the very best we can for the students at South Central, as we do for every kid in every school in our district, day by day. I don't know how this is going to work out. You know, I will tell you that Mr. Brown's absolutely correct. I had long, long discussions with Mr. Marshall, both in a very formal setting and very informal setting. Because I think the rapport that he and I have had over the past nine years or so, we're able to talk. He tells me his true feelings, I'm able to tell him mine. Ladies and gentlemen, it is what it is. If I could go back and turn the clock back, we'd do some things differently, probably, but I don't have that attitude. I do appreciate the parents' involvement, the faculty's support of their administration. The one thing I've learned about these school systems, and I've worked for the past four years, is school systems are a lot bigger than individuals. And we'll survive, and we'll move forward, and in some ways, it's painful, but sometimes growing up is painful. And so we'll be able to do it maybe a little differently, but we hope to bring you the same type of leadership that you've had under Mr. Marshall. And I can guarantee you, he's already on me, wants to know when South Central graduation is next spring, because he's going to be there at graduation, that's just the kind of guy that he is. But let us work through it, let's see what we can come up with, and we'll try to do you right by the selection of what we do.
I know Dr. Clark told me last year that we were going to lose him, but you know, I didn't think we would, but the science outcome available, and that's what he was So, I mean, I know Dr. Clark talked to him.
And I think points are very well taken in regard to multi-year contracts, and I've said that for, you know, I've said that ever since we deviate from that. I've been a strong proponent of initiatives, Bill Hall and Ms. Burt was having to define it.
Well, I think one reason the board got away from that was when we had the issue with Mr. Dunning. We were paying him the salary, the highest-paid athletic director in the state of Indiana, because we had given him a two-year contract.
But by penalize the eight or 10 others that are doing a good job.
When you get burned a couple times, you have to think about what you're doing.
It all comes down to money.
I know.
Yep.
But if Mr. Marshall wanted to come back, we'd have took him back.
The other com, I got one other comment. When I got on this board, I felt like what the lady just said, South Central gets cheated. And I really felt that way when I got on the board. And when we was doing the construction project down there, they weren't gonna put an auditorium in there. And I said, "Damn, you all are. You got one out here, we're gonna have one down there." We don't have football, but whenever we have anything we need done on our softball or baseball diamond, I fight to get it done. Because when you spend twenty thousand dollars on a football field, you oughta be able to spend ten thousand on a baseball or softball diamond down there. If they get twenty computers, we oughta get ten. And that's the way I've been, and I fight for that. And that's the way I think the school down there has got to live.
Jeff, before we end this, I got one thing I wanna say. A lot of you don't know, I was on the board from nineteen seventy-six to nineteen eighty-four. And that's when the two new school plan was running to effect. And if it hadn't been for me and Bill Toole, I'll guarantee you, you know where our kids would be going to school? They'd be going to school right up here. And if you don't believe me, you just check the records back. We said, "If you're gonna build a school garden, we're gonna build one at South Central." They said, "No, let's come on down the road down to Jennings Place down here, two mile out." I said, "That ain't halfway." They said, "Well, the road's just too bad to go down to Rainbow Sawmill." I said, "Yeah, them roads run both two ways, and they do." And that's the reason why you got a school at South Central and got a guys like me and Jeff Brown. So I'm putting that in your pipe and smoking.